Ms. French, if you're ready.
Do you solemn swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and harshly discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the La Cota Local Schools, Mr. Boba Calhoun, to the best of your ability and accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during your tenements and set-aways and until your successor is elected full-time?
I will.
On the floor.
And with that, I'd like to call to order this Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, April 3rd. Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mr. D.
Here.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mr. Horton.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
With that, we would like to start the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to lead that, Ms. French.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I just would like to welcome, you may notice, we have a new person who is joining us at the table, Christina French, who is well-known to the La Cota community as a former principal as well as working in our elementary curriculum area. So we are so thankful that she joined us after the interviews that we did Monday. Monday was a bit of a long day for everyone. We had an 11-hour meeting. We interviewed 11 people and we were so thrilled with the caliber of everyone who was willing to step up for our students and staff and community. And we chose Mrs. French in the end, and we're thrilled to have her join us here at the table. So we will now be a fully functioning five-member voting board again. So thank you for being willing to step up for our community.
Of course.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent's comments.
Thank you very much and welcome, Mrs. French.
Thank you.
Tonight, I'm going to ask for my comments to be delivered by curriculum team members. And we have two different things that we want to talk to you about. One is the adoption and how that occurred and what actually is happening with it. You may have seen the books outside. That's thanks to Mrs. Brown and her family for delivering those. They acted as our logistics managers yesterday and delivered those. And then the second thing is, I'm going to ask Mr. Wheatley to share some data points that I think are really important for the community to hear, for the Board to hear, for our staff to hear, because our staff are the ones that are responsible for producing much of those data points, including the curriculum team. So I'd like to invite any of the members of the curriculum team to come forward to present to us tonight. Thank you for being here.
All right. I think we're switching over to a PowerPoint there. Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight, and we're excited to bring some information to you and request and make a recommendation for an adoption for our English Language Arts and our Mathematics curriculum tonight. So what we'll be talking about is, I'll talk a little bit about the process, and then Andrew Wheatley and Emily Herman will talk through some of the actual materials that you can see outside, if anybody wants to visit those. So a little bit about the work of our team. I wanted to start that way and just share out that really the Curriculum and Instruction Team, the first thing that we need to do to be able to function and have great instruction in our buildings is to identify what we mean when we say "curriculum." What are we actually teaching in our classrooms? And what do those materials look like? And what does that instruction look like? So if you look at kind of, it's hard to see on the slide deck, I apologize, but you can see in that top box, that Curriculum and Instruction piece is, once we make those decisions and decide what those materials and instructional pieces are, we can move down to that next part of the cycle, which is professional training and learning for our teachers. So we have to decide what it is that we're instructing to be able to have our teachers trained in that area and trained in that instructional practice. And then at the very bottom of that cycle there is what we call collective fidelity. So that's where our building administrators and our supervisors come in and say, you know, how do we know that we're doing all the things that we're trained to do and using all the materials that we are trained to use and making sure that we're doing what we're saying we're doing, kind of thing. And then that last piece goes into accountability. So if we know what we're teaching, what we're using, if our teachers are trained and able to do that work, and then we know that we are with fidelity doing those things, we should see that accountability really move. We should see student scores really move because of that. So that kind of works in a cycle. And then once we see those accountability scores and know how our students are performing, then we go right back up to the top again and look at, okay, what are our scores and data telling us about what we need to choose or do differently or add or subtract to our curriculum? So just that general idea of how we think about how all these things are put together, I just wanted to kind of start and share that a little bit. The next item here, and this is also a little bit difficult to see, I apologize, is just when we talk about curriculum, I think a lot of people have different ideas about what we mean when we say "curriculum." Some, that might mean a textbook, others, it might mean the standards that are on the state website. So I kind of put this together to show, when we talk about curriculum in La Cota, what do we mean? And it's actually a combination of a lot of different things. So what you'll see here is a document type that goes down the left side, and then who creates it and manages it in the middle. And then on the right-hand side is how often is that reviewed or updated. So at the very top, you'll see Courses of Study, and that's actually the standards from the state. You know, what is this course or this grade level content area, what is it meant to teach? And what you actually approved a couple of months ago was our Course of Study for ELA and Math. So that was kind of the first step for us to be able to choose materials, was to adopt those standards and say, yes, this is what we're intending to instruct on. Underneath that, we have what's called our Instructional Minutes, where we talk about how much time do we have to instruct in this area? So what does that look like for, in kindergarten, for example, how much time do we spend on ELA versus math, those different things? So that top Course of Study is, what are the standards? What are we addressing? What are we trying to teach? And then how much time do we have to teach it? Underneath that is what we call our Instructional Framework, which we use Marzano's Instructional Framework in La Cota. And that's how do we teach? You know, what instructional strategies are evidence-based and all of our teachers are trained to use? And that's how we instruct those standards. And then underneath that, we get into what we call like a Scope and Sequence, which tells us how to pace out, so that teachers are knowing how much time to spend on different standards and how those flow over the course of a school year. So when we get into the Scope and Sequence, then we can start looking for actual materials. What are we going to use to instruct and get to these standards? And that's kind of what we're here to talk about tonight, is the development and choice of those materials and recommendations that we have for you. And then underneath that, once we've kind of chosen the materials, we know our pacing, we know what we're teaching, how we're teaching it, then we get into the very bottom part, which are the things that our teachers use day-to-day. Our daily instructional guides, unit templates, curriculum maps, and even our model courses in the 7 through 12, that kind of builds down. So that's why there's arrows going down through there. So right now, for ELA and math, we are kind of at that middle line of the Scope and Sequence, adopted materials, and tying instructional applications into that, too. So we'll be looking through that and aligning all of those to the materials as well. So when we say "curriculum," this is what we mean, and it's kind of a development over time. So in La Cota, you'll see that we have, we're developing and starting the use of curriculum instruction, or adoption cycles, excuse me. So in Year 1, if you can see a little bit here, Year 1 is what would happen every five years for different content areas. And we're in Year 1 for ELA and math this year. So that means we're researching, we're looking at our data, we're possibly piloting, if that's something that we decide to do on a content area, and then updating that Course of Study and getting that Scope and Sequence ready and actually looking for materials to purchase if we need to purchase. There may be a time in the future that our data looks great and we don't need to purchase any further things in that content area, and we just move forward with that. But in a Year 1, it's kind of like that research/pilot cycle. And that's where we are for ELA and math. So then next year, ELA and math will move into Year 2, which is more of the implementation year. So we've purchased things, hopefully, and then we start using them. We unpack those things, and we have teacher teams running all throughout the year to review those new materials and say, are these lessons working? How's the pacing working out? Did that meet the standard? How are the students responding? All those different things. And they're creating and revising those teacher-based materials to say, as we learn through this, here's, you know, here's how we're changing and updating those materials. So that in Year 2, we can kind of determine, what does fidelity look like? You know, what are those things that are consistent across our classrooms to be able to get the biggest bang for our buck from these materials? And then in Years 3, 4, and 5, we monitor that. We look at our student data and we make revisions as needed, but we kind of ride through. And then after that, Year 5 would be a Year 1 again, where we would start that research and pilot and those kind of things. So this year, we are in Year 1 for ELA and math. Next year will be Year 2, and we will start another content area next year as well, which I'll show you that in just a second. So this next slide just kind of shows, along with those Year cycles, there's different types of teacher teams that are meeting. So next year, for example, we'll be going into a science review year. So we will have a research and pilot team for science working throughout the year at the same time that our ELA and math teams are going through the implementation process of this year. So that's kind of the cyclical process that you'll hopefully get used to seeing from us every year and on a timely basis. So this is kind of what our plans are for the next couple of years, as far as what content areas we're looking at when. This helps us in a lot of ways. Number 1, it helps us identify, you know, for monetary reasons and budgeting reasons, we kind of know when money will be spent on different things. And that allows us to focus our professional development and focus our planning around this time. So we've kind of picked some of our core content areas with our on-core content areas and kind of blocked that out over the next four years. So our teachers know when things are going to be looked at, when we're going into a research year versus an implementation year and those kind of things. So those are a little bit about what can be expected over the next couple of years as far as new content areas coming to the table. And then lastly, before I turn it over to Emily and Andrew, is this is what a typical Year 1 process looks like. And I put an asterisk on here because this year wasn't a typical year. We had a couple of things, like the State of Ohio was releasing a list of materials that we had to choose from for ELA for this year. And of course, that took a little longer than expected, so we were a little behind the eight ball on that. But typically, in a Year 1 process, so for next year for science, for example, in Quarter 1, we would gather our team together, make sure we have a representative team of administrators and teachers across the district, pool of all of our data that we have on science, for example, and in that first quarter, really researching and sending our teachers to professional development and conferences to figure out, you know, what are the latest, greatest things out there? And then narrowing down that list to pilot, hopefully, in a second quarter, if that's what's decided is needed. And then we would do community feedback and review in the third quarter and a request for Board recommendation or Board approval in that time. And then fourth quarter, we can start with professional development and ordering and all the materials and things like that. So hopefully, this gives you a little idea of the process we're walking through and that will be coming year to year based on the content area that we're working on. So like I said, that's the process in general that we've been going through this year with ELA and math. And here tonight, we have some recommendations that we'd like to bring before you. All of the materials, for anyone in the audience as well, the materials are out in the lobby right now. They've been in the lobby of Central Office for the past two weeks, and we've had feedback forms there so that people could write us some notes and give us some feedback on the materials and review them. So that's been going on for a little bit. So at this time, I'm going to pass it over to Emily Herman, who's going to talk about ELA and K through 6, ELA and Math in K through 6.
Thanks. Good evening.
Hello.
Hi. Hey. Okay, so I'm going to start with K-6 ELA. We have two materials that we're recommending, first being Imagine Learning EL Education. This is a focus on the comprehension side of reading. It is a knowledge-building curriculum, so it uses social studies and science topics to teach reading. So it's not only teaching children to read, but also building their content knowledge and background information that they have when they come to text. The things that are included, that we are looking at purchasing, are teacher manuals that are both physical and online. There is a student modules that also are, we would be buying the physical workbooks, and they would also have online access. We would be purchasing the trade books that are required for teaching the units, and those are physical text. Some of the books are single copies and some of them are class sets, depending on the title and how it's used for instruction. And then we'd also be purchasing professional development for both our teachers and our administrators through the company. The foundational skills portion, this is focused for K-3 for next year. This is a new product, and they will be releasing it for 4, 5 the following year. So we are looking at trying to extend our foundational skills instruction that through 5th grade. The K-3, it comes again with a teacher manual, both online and physical. It has student read books. These are decodable readers. It's also workbook in nature, where it works on handwriting, so students are writing in these books as well. It has sound posters and sound stories that are used whole class, large, large-size posters. Spell tab folders are used for students to build words. Word construction cards, syllable boards, all of these materials are large for whole-group instruction. Classroom visual, sound wall and red word cards, decodable books. So there are also individual copies of decodable books for students that are in small group sets. And on the online platform that teachers get, there is on-demand PD and videos of instruction for the teachers to watch and use. They can also be pushed out to students. And not included on the quote currently is, but we're wanting to add it, is in-person PD. So focusing on the ELPD first, but continuing to work with the company to look at in-person PD for the Haggerty as well. Something exciting about the Haggerty piece is our teachers have been using their phonological awareness program already. And so this, and it's something they're excited about and having success with, and this builds into that. So that will become a part of these lessons. And for math, for K-6, and this includes advanced 6th grade math, the recommendation is Imagine Learning's illustrative mathematics 360. And just to warn you, what's out for display is actually just illustrative. The illustrative 360 is the newest version that's being printed this summer, so there's more color. The content is pretty much the same, but it's a more engaging print. And there are some samples of that that you can see. But included in this purchase, again, would be teacher manual, both physical and online. And something exciting about going with illustrative and EL is they're both Imagine Learning products, so it's the same platform for our teachers. The teachers would also get a resource kit, which are BlackLine Masters, that they would be able to copy for our students. They get a student workbook. We are only purchasing that for one year to see, there's some mixed review from other districts on the usage of that, so we want our teachers to be able to fully implement next year and then decide, was this a valuable resource? Is it something we need to reorder? Or would we discontinue that part of the order? The students have an online account as well. We would be purchasing manipulative kits and, again, professional development, both online and in-person, from the vendor.
I'm sorry, you will be purchasing the professional development, or that's?
That's part of the quote.
Okay.
Correct. Sorry about that.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Andrew.
Just to start off with mathematics here, and the reason for that is, what we're choosing to adopt in 7 through 12 is Amplify Desmos illustrative-based math. And so when you heard for K-6 math, they're using an illustrative-based product. So from K to 12, we'll be having our math curriculum using the same foundational resources all the way through, and we thought that was really important. So that actually goes from 7th grade through Algebra II. And then I'll talk a little bit about some of the courses that are beyond Algebra II that we're also adopting resources for. So with the Amplify Desmos, you can see the courses that align there, both 7th and, Math 7 and Advanced, 8th grade math, Algebra. And where things get a little bit tricky with this one is that they are currently in the process of building both the geometry and the Algebra II, and those won't be ready for the following year. The nice part about with illustrative is, that's something that we have access to the illustrative resources, including the Desmos resources. And so our teachers in those courses will be starting to utilize those resources, but won't have the full platform until the year after that. And then with that, what's teacher, what everybody, what we will get is digital access for all students and teachers. We'll also be getting class sets for students of the textbooks. And then teachers will have physical copies also. And then we'll have, we're included in the quote, is the professional development, both online and onsite. We'll also are adopting for pre-calculus, and so the resource is called Miller. And then for AP Calculus, which includes AB and BC, and then AP Stats, we're going to be adopting a textbook that will include the teacher copy and a class set of student copies, physical and digital, for all of our students. Language Arts is a little bit simpler because it's just one resource for all the courses. So you can see there that it's the 7th Regular and Advanced, 8th Regular and Advanced, CP and Honors 9, CP and Honors 10, CP English 11, and then CP English 12, which is our Britain World Lit class. So the resources that teachers and students will get is, we have digital access for all students, and then there will be class sets of student textbooks, and then, and then the teachers will also have the physical teacher editions for those. And then professional development will be online and onsite for that resource also. And before I move on to the next part, talking about some data points, I just want to make sure I open up the floor to questions for myself or Ms. Herman or Ms. Brown.
Who wants to start? Do you want to start?
I do have a, I just have a couple of questions. Is there, because we are going to be getting curriculum updates on a regular basis, because I'm old and I can't see, is there a way that we can either get it in a handout so I can follow along, or it can be attached to the agenda so I can follow along?
Please.
Not as much the adoption, or the, you know, what you're adopting, because we can see that, but I, I'm old, I can't see. So just in the, if, yeah, if we could go forward, just, if we could see that.
We've been adding those in after the meetings, but we can begin putting those in prior to the meetings so that it's available.
So that we can see it, yeah. I just have a question about when you pilot something. When you pilot a curriculum, do you, how many people pilot it? Like, how many teachers across the district? And what, I'm going to make this up, because I don't know. When you pilot, let's say, 4th grade math, do you let the teacher pick the lesson to pilot, or do you guys pick the lesson that they pilot?
So there's no set rules on how you pilot, but each team theoretically, each team, when we do that first-quarter research and determine the need for a pilot, we would identify what specifically we're asking teachers to do. So it may be different, depending on the content area or what we're specifically looking for. Now, this year, we didn't do a formal pilot, but we did ask teachers to review the materials, try a lesson out, try to sub it for something that they're currently using and see the difference. And we had teachers do that, you know, on their own, but it wasn't specific to this amount of time or this amount of lessons or anything like that. But in the future, we would look as a team and decide, what do we want out of this pilot to know the answer to that question?
So we get a pretty good sampling? We're not having like two teachers pilot?
Right. We would absolutely want a representative sample across multiple buildings. I think Andrew has something he would like to say.
Yeah, just in secondary, we had one teacher from every single building in secondary, a part of the team that went through this whole, the whole entire year as part of this process. And then they also had time in which they took all the resources back to their building and opened that up for all the teachers in that building to be able to see it. So every single teacher that was a math or ELA teacher in secondary had an opportunity to engage with the resources that you've seen today.
Okay, good, because I was just wondering how much hands-on they get to.
And to add to that, specifically even to your 4th grade example, we had 20 teachers looking at ELA from across the district, different grade levels and buildings, and 20 teachers looking at math as well. And then in addition to that, we had a sample of administrators, building administrators also.
Oh, okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions as well. Dr. Lawley, thank you for this, because your, this transparency that we've been looking for for a long time, because a lot of people have been means-informed about our curriculum. My first question is, is it possible for a teacher to use any material outside their approved curriculum?
So a teacher is able to choose and design a lesson the way that they see fit. However, when we will adopt materials and we create, if you remember at the bottom of that curricular document, that flow document that was in the PowerPoint, oh, I can go back to it. What we provide to teachers, at the very bottom there are those, what we call kind of a daily instructional guide, that really breaks down what materials you're using for that particular standard, and teachers are expected to use that. So could they bring in an article from a current event that relates to something that they're talking about? Absolutely. And teachers do bring different materials, but they will be expected to use what we've adopted consistently, if that makes sense? Did I answer that question for you?
Okay. So then the next question will be, how do you ensure that they are following the curriculum to the book? Because there's all kinds of rumor out there that
Sure.
they might not, and you are not able to know that they are following it or not. And that's why some thought that it is necessary to go and see what the teacher is teaching. So how do you ensure that it's being followed?
So the biggest thing is, when we identify what it is that we're asking our teachers to use consistently, that we create look-for's and checklist things that our administrators coming into classrooms daily know what to, when I'm walking into a 4th grade math classroom, what should I expect to see? What materials should I see? What questions should I ask the teacher? Those are all supports that we provide to our building administrators, so that they know what to, you know, because not everyone's an expert in every content area. So we give them a checklist of those look-for's to say, this is what you should see in a social studies classroom in 7th grade, for example. So we help design that in our, on our end, but there is an art and a science to teaching. So the science part being what we know is evidence-based and that should be consistent for all students in La Cota, but the art being that every teacher knows their classroom and their learners and is able to, you know, modify how they teach so that their students are able to meet those standards. But in general, every teacher in every classroom is working towards those same state standards, so they're getting to that same end. But there is, like I said, an art and a science balance to that. So our administrators are in there, looking in those classrooms every day and asking those questions, and our teachers are asking questions of us and sharing what's working and what's not, so that we can kind of maintain that consistency for all students.
Thank you so much. Then finally, have you ever figured out in a class that a teacher is going outside the curriculum? Have you found any?
Have we found that?
Any, yeah.
I, not that I have investigated or anything like that. Not that I have investigated or anything like that, but we see teachers using, you know, different materials in their classroom. And as I said, if we go through these adoption cycles, we will tighten up the consistency on that over time. But no, I, we have not received, you know, particular complaints or anything that we would have to investigate and see if, you know, materials are being used that shouldn't be.
And one of the things that I would add to that is, is with the, the Board of Education is responsible for the adoption of the courses of study and the materials that are used in a classroom. So what that basically says is that I, as an employee of the district, I'm responsible for implementing what those adopted materials are, what those adopted standards are from, for us, from the Ohio Department of Education. So if I veer too far off that path, that becomes an issue for that particular teacher, and that becomes an administrative, a principal having that conversation and saying, no, we don't, we don't use teacher pay teacher for these things because we have quality resources right here that are research-based and produced. So if there's something that I really want to use in my classroom that is not specifically board-adopted, like Ms. Brown said, I have some articles or I have a book that I want to read that's not specifically adopted, if I think it's controversial, I believe our policy states that I have to talk to the principal about it ahead of time and make sure that we're, the principal knows that and make sure that the principal kinds of, kind of gives a stamp of approval on that. So if there's something like that, then that, that still has an approval-type process through it. But it is an art and it is a science. So every classroom, while you may see the same materials, you may not see the same type of instruction in implementing those materials and those standards, because I'm different, I'm a different teacher than Mrs. Casper is. And we teach differently, but we are teaching the same standards
Okay.
across the board, and we are using the same materials overall.
And if I could add, as a parent, I have gotten letters from my child's teacher to say, here are some books, this is the book your child chose to read, and can you please sign off on this reading? So as I, even, I've been surprised as a high school parent to get that, but I think everyone's trying to really dot their i's and cross their t's and be extremely careful. So I've signed off on what my own child is reading.
That's interesting. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you for presenting all of this. And I also want to thank you for the great effort that you've had to make all of this available to the community. So I know we've had it on display at the central office, at the Welcome Center, it was at the DPC meeting this morning. So I think it's just really great that you've made such an effort to get everyone exposed to what we're looking to adopt. I also love the framework that you said, allow teachers that flexibility to reach their students where they are. So for example, I imagine next week, there's going to be a lot of articles brought in about the Eclipse, which is exciting, right? And I love to preserve that for our students, so that's exciting. I have one clarifying question for Mr. Wheatley. Mr. Wheatley, am I understanding it right that the English platform is in the seven through 12 is different than the math platform as opposed to as it is in the lower grades?
Yeah, that is correct. They're two different vendors.
Just wanted to make sure that. And then as I look at the math side of things, I see that we're investing in, it said, workbooks for, or class sets of workbooks. And the reason I want to just understand that better is, I guess, as this has been tested with the teachers who've used it this year, does this result in more what I would call paper and pencil math? Or is this still more digitally based, or is there a balance there? How should I think about that?
Yeah, we're trying to find a balance, but I think there's quite a bit of research and evidence that doing math, especially on paper, provides benefits. So we want to make sure that we are providing resources in which that's an opportunity for our students to have.
Okay, great. I know we've gotten that feedback as we've talked to, especially the kids at East and West.
They want more paper.
They've told us we want paper.
They really do.
They want more paper, yeah.
And we've seen that with the pilots, that this has resulted in that? Or do we know that?
Say that again.
So I, my understanding is that we piloted this year with some of the teachers?
Yeah, we didn't necessarily do a full pilot, but we did have the resources in our teachers' hands. And so we've also been doing other, you know, talking to our teachers and with our curriculum leaders, talking about like, where do they want to see paper? Where do they want to see students doing, you know, non-digital activities? And then making sure that the digital platforms are also meeting our needs, because we do know that the, at least digital is a great way to be able to provide greater access and to, you know, resources to students both at home and if students need other like accessibility features are able to be provided through digital access a lot of times too. But we need to make sure that we have the paper available for students to be able to do that type of work.
Great, and thank you. And then from, for the K through six level, I really like that they're both on the same platform. I think that eases the adoptability for both our staff and our teachers and then me as a parent. I also really appreciate the added resources in there of integration for additional resources for English language learners, which I think gives us more flexibility going forward to address the increasing need for that in our district. So really appreciate that. And I actually really appreciate the recognition to build some knowledge-based learning into the skill building. It allows us to take advantage of that time better. And then I think also to help us with our test scores, knowing how testing, kind of, some of the biases of the testing. So really appreciate the work and the thought that's been given to all of us. Thank you.
Fabulous job. It was very thorough. I love to see a process that can be expected year after year so that we can make sure that we're continuing to flow through the cycle and make sure that we do have the most up-to-date resources for our students. I know the programs that you chose have a fabulous research base, which is the number one thing when you're looking at curriculum, is what does that research look like and what kind of data does that bring back? I do have a couple of questions. All of the programs seem very comprehensive for most of our students. Can you talk a little bit about the components that are included for our special education students, our gifted students, our students that maybe, maybe don't fall right in line with the most?
So, it is on, right? The EL, specifically the ELA portion, it has two hours of instruction. So the first hour is focused on a module instruction, which would be the same for everyone. And the second hour is differentiated work that students are able to go into. And so it would meet the needs of all learners, because the teacher can use assessments that are in the program to help decide what would be the best instruction for that student to engage in for that, that second part. And then it also has, like many manuals, right, teacher tips on the side of how they can make the lessons during the module part more accessible if a child needs additional help, or how they could push a child further if, if they were accelerated in their learning. And then the math also is a program that they call low floor, high ceiling. So students are able to access the problems at many different levels. And then the layering of the lesson helps build their understanding and pushes them toward more efficient models of solving and understanding. And then it also has additional to the lesson centers that are differentiated. So each center has four different levels that allows all students to engage and to move through those levels to build their understanding. Thank you.
So for our ELA adoption, I think that's actually what our teachers and our team, one of the major reasons why we picked My Perspective, so our teachers reported that not only does it have the broadest spectrum of texts and resources to meet the needs of all students, but especially in the category of having the most rigorous texts, that we knew that from talking and doing a research with our teachers and looking at our test scores, that raising the rigor was something that we knew that we needed to do, especially in writing and reading. And so that's one of the major reasons why we decided to pick the My Perspective curriculum.
Thank you. My next question kind of goes along with that. Would you mind sharing just a couple of points of feedback that you've gotten from teachers and students on these programs?
So starting with the foundational skills, we had extremely high feedback from our teachers. It was a rating of one to five. I'm pretty sure they were all fives, which was exciting to see. We currently have two first grade teachers implementing the program, and they've received, they've given us positive feedback. They love it, the kids are loving it. One of the teachers shared with me that a parent of one of her highest readers called her and was sharing how much of an improvement in a short time she's seen in her students' writing. So that was really exciting feedback to get about the program. The EL is a shift for our teachers. And so we have started really digging into knowledge-building curriculums and why and how they're important. But the feedback we got around EL that was why we ultimately went with that is that they really liked the hands-on piece. The labs that come along with the K two is very hands-on, high-interest, play-based, and it extends the lessons and the learning. So there was a lot of positive feedback on that portion. They also really liked the texts that were available within the unit and the topics. So they liked that EL. The other program we looked at was much more based in social studies topics. And what they liked about EL was that it had science and social studies topics that they were building knowledge in. So that was some of the positive feedback we got about that. And then the math, we've actually had a group of teachers digging into illustrative starting last year that have been utilizing it in their classroom. And the feedback from them and teachers that tried out lessons is that the level of conversation that students were having about their math and their math understanding was really impressive. And that was something they really enjoyed about that program.
Great.
So similar to what Ms. Herman said, is that for math, this is going to be a shift for teachers, and our teachers acknowledge that. So the team who was a part of this work stated that, and kind of their feedback was that they knew that this was going to be a difficult shift, but it's the direction that they wanted to head. So we do know that from our side of things, that means that professional development's going to be really important, and that was something that the teachers acknowledged also. It's the direction they want to head, but they need to be supported. So we're working really hard to make sure that professional development plan and the support for those teachers is really solid. When it comes to language arts, like I said, our teachers were really excited about this. For the emphasis on the high-quality writing, that was the feedback that they really liked. And as I said before, they were really excited about just the, how broad the amount of resources were. They expressed specifically that My Perspective provided way more resources than the other potential resources that we are looking at. The other piece, I think, is, the other piece is in My Perspective is that teachers commented on just the strong depth of knowledge and alignment of the depth of knowledge and then pushing up to the level three and four of the depth of knowledge chart that My Perspective provides.
Great. And then my final question is, is there a standard expectation of use for these? Kind of goes along a little bit with Isaac's question, but more focused on, is this the foundation and they're expected to use 100% and build upon that in the lessons? Or is it kind of broken apart and dropped in?
That's a great question, and that's actually the question we've probably been asked most by our teachers. And what we've talked about is for next year, when we go in, when we roll into next year, you have new materials, you know, right in front of you. No teacher is expected to be, you know, 100%. Because I know we have a lot of teachers who are asking for time. You know, they, they really need time to dig into these, to these materials, learn the methodologies, and, you know, go from there. So we are, number one, not expecting anyone, anybody to be perfect in year one. But year two, on year two, in that implementation team, that's what we're hoping to really get the nuances out of what is consistent versus what, you know, is more autonomous. So that when our teachers sit down in those groups next year and say, this is a lesson that we feel is really foundational, these are our power standards that we want to hit, we need to make sure we're all aligned in these specific areas, and then we may be a little more autonomous in, in other areas. But in short, we, we're looking to identify that fine balance of consistency and autonomy, because we do not want to take away a teacher's autonomy, that art of teaching. But we do also want to guarantee a consistent Lakota education, no matter what classroom, building, side of town that you're on. So it's, it's not an easy answer of, but it's not a 100%. You walk in a classroom and see the same exact lesson from one classroom to the other. It would be more of a balance of really finding what is most important to be consistent for student learning and for accountability, and then seeing where those areas of autonomy can be too.
Thank you.
I know we've had, sorry, you still got me. We've had some concerns about just where we are in aligning with standards. So we're comfortable that all of these programs align very strongly with Ohio standards. See a lot of heads shaking. And do we also think that this will save time for our staff in the long run? Because to your point of the teachers, helping teachers, I think they were trying to find some things, and hopefully will this alleviate some of that time that they're having to spend doing that?
The short answer is yes and yes to both those questions. A slightly longer answer is that working with the state of Ohio and the process that put together with, related to HQIM, which is High Quality Instruction Materials, they've been working really close with an organization called EdReports. Ed Reports evaluates resources. And so one of those things that they evaluate is alignment to the standards. So we've only been looking at resources that have aligned really well to the state standards.
And then a question on, I know the state has adopted new English language requirements for our materials. So two things, have they provided any, any funding for any of that new adoption? And then secondarily, how has the pricing of this overall program worked?
So as far as, what we've been told from the state is that we would be reimbursed for the cost of a new adoption if we did not have something adopted that was on the list, which that's the position that we're in. So I know we had to do a survey in the fall where the state asked what materials we were using, I assume so that they could prepare for what, you know, their costs would be coming down the line. But what we're, what we're expecting is that we would purchase and that, that we would be reimbursed for ELA. I don't, the same thing doesn't exist right now for math, but we are hearing that it could. But it is ELA at this point.
Great. And then how did you work on pricing for all these programs?
Great question. So one, we've been, one of the things that we haven't done in recent years is we haven't done a whole lot of multi-year pricing. And we are pricing out for five years so that hopefully that that gives us the best pricing, competitive pricing for the programs. But we are also, in everything that we looked at, we, we compare prices. And I know Andrew and Emily and team really did a lot of effort to try to reduce shipping costs, to cut out things that weren't necessary to, you know, make sure, even workbooks, for example, buying those classroom sets, because we want our teachers to be able to utilize them and see if they're worth the expense for the future before we decide that we're, you know, going with those workbooks for all that. So cost-wise, I think what we are purchasing was pretty comparable to competitors, and I'll let you guys speak if you hear any different of that. But what we saw was pretty comparable, but we have done a lot of effort into kind of getting the best pricing that we can.
Great, you have something you want to say? Oh, okay. Yep.
I can just add, with the ELA and math being on this, being the same company, we were able to eliminate any shipping cost for five years, which was exciting. And we had narrowed ELA down to two products. And after negotiating, the one we purchased was a million dollars less than the other product. So good pricing.
And then I know you talked about the importance of the high-quality professional development and the investment in that with these different programs. Is part of that going to be bringing our innovation specialists up to speed on this so they can provide additional building support? And I think, aren't we using Hamilton County for a part of that as well?
Yeah, correct on that. So we're actually starting this professional development on these resources this month. And that first step is in with our, if it's approved, that, with our vendors. Our vendors would be doing training specifically with our innovation specialists this month so that they can start to get up to speed and they can work collaboratively with us to make sure that the professional development that is provided both by our in-house staff also aligns with what's being both by our in-house staff also aligns with what's being provided by the vendor. Because the last thing you want to do is have a vendor that's providing professional development that's not using the same language, or is not using the same instructional model. So part of that professional, actually is, goes to the vendor to make sure that they understand our model. So when they're doing it, so that work is starting, actually literally Friday, with our team, and then getting those dates lined up. On May 7th, we will be doing training for K-12 through the vendors and with our innovation specialists. That's a PD day. So we're starting that training on these on May 7th, assuming approval.
Great.
I was just going to say, like I said, the biggest feedback we're hearing from teachers is that they want time and training. So we're trying to deliver that in a multitude of ways. So our innovation specialists will be trained trainers, kind of like the arm of curriculum. So they'll be the in-house expert in the building. And we're dividing them up into expert groups on ELA and math. And then we will be a blend of training and professional development. So training being more of the technical, where are all the things, what buttons do I push, what, what is included? And PD being, how do we tie this in with things that we already, you know, are tried and true? How do we tie this in with our methodology and pedagogy? How do we tie this in with our instructional framework? And that will be ongoing. So we're looking at definitely a PD plan that is full. We've already packed our PD calendar for next year. And we are building things like Teams portals, where anyone can get on at any time and ask a question and talk, that we would have office hours, help sessions, in addition to our training PD on the building level and the district level. So that's, that is a big plan on our minds right now. And we're hoping that teachers can walk out the door this year with high clarity on what materials they're getting, what's to be expected on day one, what opportunities they have this summer, and what next year's professional development will look like. We're also hoping we're offering a lot of options for our teachers this summer, even though it's optional. Hopefully they'll see, you know, what, what we have packed and in store for next year, and they might take some summer opportunities to, to get started early. So that, that's a big chore that we have on our list.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you. We appreciate the thoroughness.
Thank you.
Thank you to the entire team. And Dr. Lally, I know curriculum is your passion. And thank you for kickstarting some of this work and making sure that we're getting the resources we need for everyone. So.
All right.
Now the fun part.
Yeah, well, we're only halfway done. So, so yeah, Dr. Lally asked me to present a little bit on some data highlights. Actually, shared some of this information this morning. I got some good feedback from a colleague, so I've tuned it up a little bit for this presentation here. But this actually circles back to earlier in the year, because the data highlights I'm going to, I'm going to address to, are really a part of when I presented out the Program of Study and Changes to Programming. And so you're going to see how that conversation back then has resulted in success for our students in our school district now. So I'm going to run through a few of these things. I want to start by saying, one of the things that we're most proud about is that the enrollment in our advanced coursework has increased for the second year in a row. And when I say advanced coursework, that's both advanced placement courses and college credit plus courses. That's really important and impressive for a couple of reasons. Well, one of those reasons is that typically, in a lot of schools, if AP goes up, college credit enrollment goes down, and then vice versa. So to have both of those go up in two years in a row, and I mean this year's students and this year's classes, and actually are then our simple tallies leading to the next year, means that I already know for a fact that we're going to hit three years in a row of increasing the amount of students that we have in advanced coursework, something that we made a priority and we're really proud that we're accomplishing. When it comes to the CCP, which is College Credit Plus, part of the reason is that we continue to offer in-house courses. So this year, and I keep on saying that because some of the things I'm talking about are, are next year things, but they were in the Program of Study that we did earlier this year. But we added a quantitative reasoning course, where students can get dual credit, and ASL4 course. So those are new courses this year in which students can take. Some simple tally data. So our students register in winter, in the, generally in February, early February, late January. And so then we take all that data, and we kind of clean it up, and then we start to build our master schedules off of that. So a couple of highlights from the simple tallies is, first is that we adopted a new system called SchoolLinks, and that ended up being a huge win. SchoolLinks made parents and students much more informed, and it was a much more transparent process about what you're able to sign up for. We, we got a lot of incredible feedback, like I said, from students and parents about the, the new system in which we're using. It also created better collaboration amongst stakeholders for the curriculum department, principals, counselors, to be able to work together in order to do the simple tally process, the registration process. We also offered three new academic advising nights in the fall. That's way before scheduling happens, where we talked about academic advising for both high school audience and junior high audience. And we think that was part of the reason and part of that recipe for getting more students in advanced coursework. We have really high numbers in AP Human Geography at the freshman level. So we offered that for the first time this year at East. And then at the simple tallies, we have nearly, I think, 60, 70 students next year sign up at West. So pretty even across the board. But that's a, you know, a increase of over 140 students across the both freshman campuses of a new freshman AP course that students can take. This is the second straight year where we have more students taking just more math classes, which is really interesting, that students are just re-engaging in math, right? So what we're seeing is that students are taking multiple math classes in the same year. You know, kind of a friend in which their, you know, child is taking both AP, and they're taking the college credit plus quantitative reasoning class, right, at the same time. So we're seeing more students taking more math classes. So other simple tally things are that we have tripled the enrollment for in-house CCP courses for next school year. We added six new CCP courses, as you remember from the presentation. And the numbers are in, we're going to have 1,800 kids taking in-house college credit-bearing courses next year between our schools. So those courses were specifically chosen because they have high impact and their broader appeal. They, a lot of those courses meet graduation requirements, and then they also meet college gen ed requirements. So students who will consider taking those, because they know they're going to mean something when they then go off to college. Couple report card data pieces. I think you've heard some of this, but just want to reemphasize, because it does relate to this conversation we're talking about. The more kids we can get in the, more advanced courses, means more rigorous work that students are doing, which means we're going to raise our overall test score. So we saw an increase in our PI from 91.3 to 93, which is a plus 1.7. Fifty, roughly 50% of our students are accomplished or higher in the OST. We saw a large performance index increase in government this fall, with the highest gains in the accomplished and advanced score category. Gap closing continues to be an area of strength, and we're maintaining four stars. So we had 12 buildings overall in the district, closing that goal. And eight out of eight subgroups have met the performance index goal in English Language Arts and Math, and all eight subgroups met or exceeded the graduation rate. Another important thing that we talked about was the College Career Workforce Military Readiness Indicator. So when we, when we did the Program of Study presentation, we talked about some of the changes that we're doing. Actually, a lot of the changes we're doing were in order to meet that indicator while also providing great opportunities for kids. So we saw this year, that number go up 10%. And as you know, that's going to be on the report card coming up here soon. We expect that to go up significantly over the next several years due to the numbers I said before, because the, the amount of students that are taking 12 CCP credits or more impacts that. So we also are including earlier on-ramps in our junior high coursework. And so the more students are taking advanced coursework at the junior high, the more likely they do to the high school level also. So we're starting to see that pay off. So we expect to see that be a strong impact on both our value-added data and our performance index data in the years to come. And then one last thing is Rise Up. So Rise Up is an industry credential that students can earn, and it's a way for students to not only provide, get something that can help them in their future careers, but it also is a way for some students to meet the graduation requirement. And we continue to have 100% success rate for our students who are using that option. And it's, also this year, we kind of completely took that over and are really just finding a lot of success. So another good data point that we're seeing. So really, just wanted to provide this data to show you that, you know, those changes that we're making programmatically are paying off, both for our district data, but then also things that really are meaningful to students and will help them as they move forward in their future. And I'll, any questions that anybody has with that, I'll take.
Let's just acknowledge.
Thank you for doing it again. Sorry, you did a DPC, and I liked it so much. I asked Dr. Lally to bring it here. No, we really, I really appreciate the research and the data, and very, very excited that we're moving in this direction.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think we rushed through a lot of that. So I want to take a minute, because it's really impressive to see that the, the things that were set in place at the beginning of the year, when we were talking about where the report card are starting to show. So I'm, I'm really excited to see that eight subgroups are showing gap closure, right? Very excited about the number of kids who are taking CCP. So 1,800 students across the two, it's just fantastic work to start increasing that. And to hear that gap closing is a strength of ours is, I would anticipate will show very well for our report cards. So appreciate the, the follow-through on this, and, and good to see that momentum continue.
Anything? And I'd like to say, just my own household this year, there was great debate about what courses to take next year. And I got lots of texts and heard lots of chatter amongst my son's friends about, there's so many great options, it's hard to pick. And that's a wonderful problem to have. And I don't think we always fully appreciate just how many opportunities we have for these kids here, and that they can really, without too much effort, based on the offerings now, start with enough credits to count as a junior when they get to college. I mean, that's amazing.
To save a lot of money, right?
Yeah, exactly. So thank you for all your work in implementing that.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Dr. Lally, before we pass it over?
No, I'll save my other announcements for the closing comments. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Zink?
I just whispered to Ms. Casper, thanks to Mr. Oskley for getting the presentation into the agenda as they were going. So appreciate, appreciate the support. That was a tough act following. It does make me very happy to hear about the college credit plus and everything, because we had been anticipating some of these changes within the forecast and the additional expenditures. So we're hopeful that that's a goal that they're able to meet, because that's a return on investment for the community. So, other than that, I don't have any further comments besides, welcome to the board, Ms. French.
Thank you. And then with recognition, I think we had talked about doing the auditor of state, but we are moving that to next meeting. So.
Yeah, may.
Okay. With that, we'll move to the Community Engagement Committee report.
We, as you have seen, we had to postpone what would have been the Special Ed Community Conversation Part Two, that was supposed to be tonight. We had to postpone it because of the threat of weather last night, so that we could meet at a board meeting tonight. So we are working diligently to hopefully find a date before the end of the year. So we have a community engagement meeting Friday.
Friday, yes. And, and it is incredibly packed schedule at the end of the year. So we're doing our best to accommodate. So really appreciate, and I think we also fully understand, especially that community, that childcare can be an issue to make schedules. So we understand the burden that it puts on that community, and, and we will try to do the best way possible. The only other build I'll say is, you know, the value of these community conversations is, is critical. And I think it, we, we are seeing where it leads to direct action. So I'll just reiterate that, you know, last week, our last board meeting, we approved added gifted instruction that came as a direct result from the community conversation that we had in November, December. And so I'm really excited to keep these continuing to show that there's a way to actually incorporate feedback from our community and turn it into action and change within the district. So I know we have these a lot, and it feels like, you know, they've become relatively routine. But it just shows that there's always opportunity to continue leveraging this and getting more feedback on things that we can do to improve our district. So.
Butler Tech, we, our last meeting was focused on the building that's being built for the Aviation Center out at Middletown, in the Middletown, at the Middletown Airport. And I will actually bring a picture out of future meeting. It's amazing how different spaces now for schools. So it's a, there's basically no hallways or no cafeteria space that isn't a multipurpose space. So everything becomes learning space in many of these new designs. And where it's very flexible as well, so there's spaces for small group instruction, there's spaces for kids to collaborate, and then there's the larger instructional spaces. So watching this development through what they're doing at Butler Tech has been very interesting, and I know will help with what we're doing next at, here with our own facilities. In addition, there was a Butler Tech student who is a 25-year-old young lady who has take, pretty much taken over her family farm. She still works with the rest of her family. It's Mullins Dairy and Creamery out in Okiana. I had the opportunity to go yesterday, because we got to announce that she will be the Ohio Association of Career Tech Education Alumni Speaker at their meeting this July. And watching her passion for what she does is just amazing. And they have, like, they sometimes have, they had cookies and cream milk, they had cotton candy milk, that they sold there in their little shop. And just what she's done, because it was basically, her siblings did not want to take over the farm, they were just kind of letting it die out. And now she's been able to transform it through technology and, and some changes. And it was just really nice to see a student who's only 25 years old, and what she's already been able to accomplish, even within an industry that you don't think of, is evolving quickly. So for me personally, it was doubly fun. My mother is a dairy farmer, was a dairy farmer, grew up on a dairy farm. So I, I saw what she did and heard her stories to, now they have an automatic milking machine that the cows line up and go in when they want to go in. And they're just like, yep, my turn, I want to go out. Some of them were bumping others out of the way. It was really interesting. So, anyway, with that, I'll go to upcoming meeting dates. We've now started adding that on the agenda, so that people know when the committee meeting dates are. So you can click on that item online, and you'll be able to see those future meetings, because we often get that question of what's coming up. So Adam is going to help us keep that up there, so that can be in the forefront for everyone.
I also noticed, I should probably add in the regular board meeting schedule in that as well, because it wasn't exactly as consistent this year with the first or third Monday of the month. So I'll add that in also for the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you, Adam. And with that, we'll go to our gifted update.
Thank you very much. You should have the PowerPoint that you can click on.
For people that are old and can't read.
What I'd like to talk about is, is what we announced to, to our parents at the end of March, close to, well, close to spring break time, and what we discussed as a board and administrative team. The gifted program, related to the information that we received from the community engagement, as well as looking at our data and, and talking to staff, we've, we've made some changes in that program. I want to reiterate the things that stay the same. And that would be the things that are on this first slide. All, all gifted students will continue to have their WEP, which is their individualized plan. That is a requirement by law. So we have to have those for students, and those stay in place. Teachers will continue to be included, and these are our classroom teachers, not just GISs or GSAs. Teachers will continue to be included in professional development that supports gifted students. So for the younger grades, cluster grouping, how do I actually do that? What supports do I need? How can I, how can I serve them better? That sort of professional development. Depth and complexity for the three through sixth grade teachers as well. And also, some of our seventh and eighth grade could also be part of that as well, if necessary. And then supporting gifted students in all of our classrooms at secondary. Making sure that we understand how to differentiate, how do, how do we make sure that our gifted students are challenged and engaged, and appropriately given the work that they need to do. Not more, but, you know, things that are challenging to me and my skill level. And the, the weekly pullouts for the math acceleration cohort groups, and the check-ins with the math groups will continue. That's not changing with any of the things that I'm going to be talking about. And then the transition support and the planning to move into the next building level. So our second grade students, their support, and the sixth grade students and their support, and the eighth grade students and their support, moving up to the next building, the next grade level, that will stay in place as well. The changes are what we will be focused on a little bit more. And it's a little hard for the audience to see, maybe because of the print. But for K-2, we're going to service our K-2 students through cluster grouping in the classroom. That's what we do regularly. And then there'll be a small group weekly pullout for second graders who are identified as gifted, that focus on critical thinking. as gifted that focus on critical thinking and academic growth. So, that's new. That is in addition, and that will help us earn credit on the state report card, that we're actually serving those second grade identified students. And then, of course, they continue to have that transition support that we talked about earlier for, and also that transition support for testing for early entrance students. So, they'll transition, second graders will transition, they'll have that support, but also anyone who's an early entrance. That testing that still is required will still occur as it has in the past. For grades three through five, service for grades three through five and through, students that are accelerated will continue to get the math and ELA+. Those classes are in place right now. That'll continue. And then, there'll be small group pullouts for the superior cognitively identified students two days a week. And they will be clustered together as superior cog students and they'll have opportunities to work in creative thinking, problem solving, extensions of their learning opportunities to do problem-based learning, et cetera. So, it'll be a challenging, engaging opportunity for them, two afternoons per week. They may be clustered as just third grade cognitive, superior cog, depending on numbers. They may be clustered as three fours, they may be clustered as four, five students. But they will be, they will receive that two days a week for half a day. And then, we're going to try and increase the rigor for the gifted programming throughout, through problem-based learning and making sure that our students have that thinking opportunity and that push towards different work, not the same work that I'm doing in the classroom, but something that's different and engaging for me. And then in grade six, we're continuing to service for sixth grade through advanced math and the ELA advanced programs like we have right now. That doesn't change. And then sixth grade will have a small group pullout one time during the week since they have the extra accelerated advanced classes already. They'll have one time for the superior cog kids who are identified. They'll be pulled out for that problem-solving, creative thinking as a set of sixth graders. And then, of course, the transition support to junior high is imperative for our students. For grades seven and eight, service for seventh and eighth grade is through advanced coursework as Mr. Wheatley talked about earlier, and it's in all four academic areas. And then there's push-in support from our GSA. We are increasing the GSA by one in secondary. Right now, we just have one who serves all secondary, and we'll have two next year who can, who can increase that support. They'll also have that small group weekly pullout for cognitively identified students, those superior cog students, and it'll be focused on increasing leadership skills, improving executive functioning, and connecting students to extracurricular opportunities. That's what they do right now. And now that we have two people, we'll be able to hopefully spend a little more time with those students. And then nine through 12, service for those students will be through the advanced coursework in the four academic areas, again CCP, AP classes, and then the support that goes with those. And then individualized support for students focused on maximize scheduling, internships, career exploration, and scholarships. And that would be the GSA's role to make sure that those things happen. So, we've been able to, we'll be able to increase the services for grades three through six and second grade. And the board has given the opportunity to us to hire five additional GISs, so I want to thank you for that. One GSA, I should say, and four GISs to make sure that we can cover these. So, every building will have one person who's a GIS in the elementary grades, and then that one person will also go to a feeder K-2 building and serve that. So, that is the conclusion of what I'd like to report out to the community and to the board on our gifted changes.
Any questions or anything for Dr. Lally? Just thank you. Thank you. This is, I hope this helps with what we talked about earlier in the year is getting some of our students that may kind of be on the cusp, but get a little bit of more help to get to that. So, when they are in high school, they can get to those CCP and advanced AP classes. So.
I think with what the changes, what changes have occurred through the curriculum work that the curriculum team members have been working on, and through this change, you'll see, you'll see that change occur for our students moving forward because there's, there's an opportunity that's been designed to capture more students. And as you can tell, with the growing number that we had signed up for next year, it's making, it'll make an impact.
Yeah. This is all great things for students.
I just want to say, sorry. I just want to say, thank you for the hard work that went into this. So, it is easy to listen to parents say that they need more, more, more support. It is different to look through an implementation that's intentional to solve the asks that are being asked for. So, I appreciate that it's not just throwing more resources, but it's actually designed to allow that cognitively gifted student to get the type of learning, not just additional work, but it's actually pulling them out for more time to feed their learning in a way that they want it to happen. And so, it's not just saying we're hiring more, more GISs. It is really redesigning our entire approach to how we're meeting that student's needs. And so, having seen that recently, what we've been doing and seeing what this looks like coming forward, I can see a lot of gains. And then, it's nice to hear how you're linking that back to the report card and how that's going to help us on our, some of our broader board goals. So, a lot of work went behind this. It's not just throwing more resources and to do it in a way that doesn't break the bank, which is fantastic. So, I really appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you. And it was a team effort. Ms. Webb has been part of this. Mrs. Hayden has been part of this, working together to make sure that we put together the best program for our students that are identified as either accelerated and/or gifted.
Yeah, I want to add to that as well. I know last year, you made, you presented the plan, and I believe the hard work from the team that you have is showing forth right now. So, we appreciate that. Thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your hard work on this. It's so important to identify our cognitively identified students separately from just our students who are falling into ELA+, Math Plus, and some of our advanced classes. So, I love to see that they now have an opportunity to branch out. I love the problem-based learning model that you're speaking of because it allows them to take their learning as far as they want to take their learning or pull it back to where it is appropriate for them. So, I love this update. I think that it's real, we're really going to see some growth on our state report card by specifically targeting these students and making sure that they truly are getting what they need in those, those, those classes. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, is anything else? Are you good? I guess I should echo thank you of what everyone said. Thank you for all of this. I think we, we all have recognized the need to invest in this area and make sure that we move forward. And to Adam's point, you want to make sure that you're investing in things, and I appreciate the, the program that'll be put together because of that investment. We'll move to board recommendations for action items, approval of expenses, expense from the fiscal stabilization fund. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Adam? Want to share a little bit about what this is?
This is something that we've been talking about with our facilities updates, and it's utilizing the funds that we've been setting aside for, currently, you'll see the plan that's in the content, which is to use these resources on buildings that may not be a part of that master facility plan as we move forward. So, it's a way of keeping these buildings online for a little bit longer period of time so that we can make the best decision for the district and the community on that master facility plan. So, that's why we're utilizing these rainy day funds.
And these have to be specific to one-time expenses?
That is correct.
Can I explain that?
Yep, that is correct. I've attached the policies in there, I believe, in the content.
You did.
And it falls into that bucket. So, it's, it's allowable expenditure based on the nature of what we're using it for.
So, it's going to be based on the need as they come forth? Or there's certain amount set aside for that?
They're going, they have an estimate in there right now that's based, based around bids that they've received back. Because these buildings would not be looked at as moving forward as part of the master facility plan, these could be viewed as one-time expenditures. So, it's kind of a, a way that we can tap into that restricted bucket of funds.
And, and these estimates match the, what was shared by Chris Pesard at the last meeting?
Yeah.
I think his spreadsheets are tagged.
That is correct. We did update it to, to very clarify estimates. If it, if it becomes greatly, you know, 10% outpourced, and we'll bring it back and let everybody know about that because there could be a little bit of flexibility there, but it's going to be somewhere close to that. Those are the projects.
Yes.
Okay. I remember that.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Adam, please call the roll.
One second. Okay. Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion for AA, approval of board minutes? So, I was going to say, what, nobody, nobody else wants to have a motion today?
Please allow me.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We have superintendent's recommendations, 9A, approval of personnel items, B, approve, approval of a MOU between the Butler County Family and Children's First Council and Lakota, and participation in a vaping prevention program, C, approval of a MOU between the governing board of the Southwest Council of Government, the cog, and the Lakota Board of Education, and then D, approve the base paid bid, excuse me, approve the base bid and alternate on construction, or on, goodness, on the pavement rehabilitation project, and E, approve donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We have number 10, board action, a resolution to initiate proceedings to consider the termination of the employment of an employee and to suspend without pay and benefits. Remind me, I don't, I think you read the resolution first, is that correct, Adam? Part of it, the first part?
The first part of it, and then we'll do the motion second to talk about it.
Okay. We have the resolution to consider the termination of Eileen Washburn employment and to suspend without pay. And I believe that's all that I needed to read, correct, Dr. Lally? Thank you. Any further discussion? Any motion? Oh, sorry. I'm like, losing my place tonight. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So motioned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right. We'll move to closing comments. I'll start at the set with Dr. Lally.
I'd like to just announce a few dates that are coming up. The weekend of April 12th, East will have their musical presentations, and April 19th, West will have theirs. So, I'm looking forward to some really good shows. We have Footloose and Mamma Mia, but reverse order of what I just said. Mamma Mia is at East and Footloose is at West, I think, right?
Yeah.
And then, we have the OMAA, which is the Ohio Music Education Association State Competition. That'll be housed, the choral one will be housed here in Lakota at East, and it will be at the end of April, and our choirs will be participating because they all receive superior ratings at the district competition. And our band from East will be participating in the state competition for bands at the end of the month as well because they received superiors as well. Testing, that wonderful time of year that all of us just love, is in process and moving forward. So, we are all, you know, on our own testing cycles, but following the, the rules that the Ohio Department of Ed have given us and making sure that our students have good testing environments and making sure that, that we work through that process the way that we're supposed to work through that. So, April is always a happy month because it's becoming spring, but it's always a very, very tedious month for buildings because of the testing and the makeups and all of that sort of thing. So, we're asking that parents make sure that their students attend school, make sure that they're well rested, and make sure that they do their very best on, on those tests because they have worked hard this year to make sure that, that we're looking at students individually and students as, as grade levels, making sure we're trying to work through and, and improve the academic achievement for all students. So, that is a real, it's a culmination month for us because of that. And then, of course, we move into graduation and the celebrations in the month of May, so we'll talk more about that at the next meeting. But just some positive things happening in the district and then those things that wear us all out with the testing. So, keep us, with your fingers crossed for the stability and the strength of everybody this month because it is very tedious for them. But that really concludes everything I'm just saying. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zink?
Want to thank the board for rescheduling the meeting to tonight from last night. The weather coming through was a little bit scary, and so I'm glad that we were able to move that and make sure everybody was safe. I also want to thank Dr. Lally and the curriculum team for their update tonight. That was very good, and I appreciate seeing the investment toward the students and building that into the forecast. We've spent a lot of time working on that and building it in, and it's putting the resources for the right reasons, and I appreciate that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. I love when you mention testing because my kids, while they didn't love testing, they loved because it was the only morning I'd made bacon for breakfast. Because they always tell you to have a good breakfast with protein, and they would be like, you know, you have to make bacon for breakfast. All right. You'll do good the test, I'll make bacon. Again, thank you to everybody for presentations. It's always great to hear what's going on and to be so thorough and let us know exactly where we are. I love that. Some shout-outs to, it is a time of the year where we're participating in a lot of things, and you talked about the choir and the band. What's amazing to me is how our kids get recognition on a national level. I mean, when the choir went to Disney, they got a golden Mickey, which they've never gotten before, the East Choir. Apparently, we've had a bronze Mickey, but never had a gold Mickey. But, I mean, we get so much recognition on not just a state level, but on a national level, and our kids are always so well behaved and so, I just, I just love to gush about our kids. So, I had something written down. Oh, yes. Mrs. French, welcome. We are excited to have you sit with us. It was a long day on Monday, but it was a very rewarding day. We talked to a lot of people that had great conversation with us, people we had not, we had never met before, who were very invested in the district. The fact that 30 people applied, we interviewed 11, says a lot about how people are invested in this district and want what's best for our students. So, I really, really was so pleased and proud to see that. Wouldn't, you know, when you post it, you think, oh my goodness, is anybody going to apply? And to have that many people apply and have that many people that had such a strong attachment to the district. In the end, we picked the best person for us, and we are super excited to have you and welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I want to, first of all, announce OSBS Southwest Regional Executive Committee meeting is coming up, April 10th, but I got email yesterday, I think there's conflict between April 10th and April 17th. So, before our next meeting, I should be able to maybe bring a report from that. So, with that being said, Ms. French, you're welcome aboard. Thank you so much. Like Mrs. Casper said, it was an intense interview. We started at 9:00 AM, ended at 7:30. That was an intense interview, and we interviewed 11 people, the U.K. and the top. So, congratulations. I look forward to what we're going to do together for the achievement, I mean, students' achievement, the progress we need in this community. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to appreciate Dr. Lally and your group. Honestly, in Honestly, in, when we attended Casper Conference, one of the things that one of the board members said is that when you appreciate what your superintendent is doing and what a treasurer is doing and their team, you motivate them to do more. I know when you came, we had a lot of things that we need to put together, and I believe your effort is beginning to show forth. I really, really appreciate the presentation by the curriculum team because this is the transparency we're looking for. It is out there, and it is for the parent to see, and that was a great job, and I appreciate that. And thank you so much, and we need to see more of that so that the community knows what is going on in our schools. I'm on the board of Lakota School District. I'm not on the board of other school districts. I don't care what happened in other school districts, but I'm focused on this district, and I'm going to continue to work to see what we need done for our students to, to be successful in this school district. So that's all I believe what I need to do. Thank you so much.
Well, I too would like to welcome you officially a second time. I thank Mrs. French to the board. I think we've been patting ourselves on the back for surviving 11 hours of interviews, but I want to pat you on the back because you survived a half-hour interview with us, which is probably a lot more arduous than what we had to endure. So I really appreciate you stepping up, and I said this, was it just last night? No, two nights ago, two nights ago. I think you make us a better board. I think you bring such a skill set and such expertise and such devotion to this district that it's really exciting to partner with you on this. So welcome. And I love that we can celebrate our successes as its district. I think it, I also want to acknowledge our losses, and so just want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the loss that the Lakota West community had over spring break. It's great that we can come together on our successes, but it was reassuring to see the community come together in our losses, and that loss will continue to be felt going forward. And it wasn't just a loss for Lakota West, it was a loss for Lakota, and it gratifies me to see us live the we are Lakota even in our times of struggle. So I really appreciate the work that the administration, both at the central office and at Lakota West, both main campus and west campus, that in a time where it's not necessarily easy to mobilize over spring break, to motivate, mobilize the resources for our students to come back from spring break to such a loss. So a lot of work went into that. It doesn't make the loss any easier, and I know individually, my interactions with the board, all of our heart went out to the families when we heard the news, and it continues to go out. So appreciate every, all the work that the teachers and staff have done to make that just a little bit easier.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank my family and friends for coming tonight, and thank you as a board for having confidence in me and believing that I can sit in this seat and make these decisions for our district. I'm honored to serve on this board. I'm honored to serve our community, and I'm honored to serve our teachers and students. But mostly, I'm just really looking forward to moving forward in a positive direction, seeing wonderful presentations like we saw tonight from our curriculum team, our gifted updates. I'm really looking forward to seeing our students and our teachers coming to share with us the wonderful things that they're doing in buildings and seeing our students succeed. So I'm honored to be a part of that, and I'm honored to be sitting here tonight in a district that I do care so much about. I have four daughters, two who are currently here, two who have graduated, and having worked in this district for 13 years prior, I take a lot of pride in sitting here. So thank you for having that belief in me moving forward, and I look forward to sitting in this seat for quite some time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, couple things. This is a little bit off from what we've been talking about, but right before I left, I saw Nerf wars had started by, some students were camped out of my neighborhood. For those of you who don't know what Nerf wars are, they are not a school sanctioned activity. They are the least favorite thing, I think, of our principles perhaps. They do not happen on school grounds, but it's a student, many schools in the district have students that participate, and there's a whole set of rules. I have no idea what they are. I just know you may see students with Nerf guns running around your neighborhood in your houses, and again, please give them some grace because I think also law enforcement probably also does not enjoy this time of year either. So just a warning that that is happening, and you will see, I saw there were two girls running around, not going after my child, but the next-door neighbor, they were, they were at Nerf wars when I left, so wanted to give everyone fair warning. I hope everyone had a wonderful spring break, was able to be rejuvenated, to go into this end stretch strong. I think that's a great breather before we go into testing season, as Dr. Lally had said. Another celebration that we recently heard is three of our students were accepted into MIT. I don't know that, again, we fully appreciate sometimes how amazing that is when their acceptance rate is as low as it is and we get, they get as many applicants. They recognize the value of our programs. They recognize what these students took advantage of, and we are so proud to celebrate not only those kids, but all the kids and all that they are accomplishing for whatever is next for them. But I thought that that was such an unusual situation for one school to get three students that that was worth a special shout-out as well. Thank you. I look forward to great things from this team up here. I am proud to be working with each and every one of this group of seven, and look, I feel like we are poised for great things for all of our students and staff and community, and can't wait to see what we're going to accomplish for all of our kids within the next year. So thank you for all your hard work to the entire team and community. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Let's let Christina second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Adam, please call the roll.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.